concession. Meeting of the notice of meeting. This is to notify you that a regular meeting of the Greater New Bedford Regional Vocational Technical High School District Committee will be held on Monday, November 10th, 2025, at 1121 Ashley Boulevard, New Bedford, Mass., 6:00 p.m. and the student forum.
Can I, Madam Chairperson, make a motion to take item 8A out of order and move it up on the agenda for the next item?
Second.
You have a second?
Do you have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I'm going to read one.
All right. Vote to accept the SMEC Capital Reserve Account Policy. Included in your backup material is a copy of the SMEC Capital Reserve Account Policy. Kathryn Cooper from SMEC will be present to answer any questions that members may have.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm the Executive Director of SMEC Assessments and Analysis Educational Project. If you have some language changes we'd like to make to our policies. Most of our, our Board of Directors is made up of one committee member from each of our 10-member districts. Mr. Shea is a city member of the VOC, representing all of our board. Our board is not even known to approve these language changes, but there are certain things that in addition to the board vote also require members of the committee approvals. So we've already been to Rochester and Marion so far. We've had many rounds to all of our school committees to answer any questions you may have on this. Basically, when we first enacted this in 2015, we have to have a maximum balance limit stated in the policy. We don't have anywhere close to $500,000 in there even, but we have to have a maximum limit stated in the policy. We are working with the state legislature on potentially getting some facilities funding specific to collaboratives. There are 24 collaboratives in the state. We're not eligible for MSBA funds or any other facilities aid. So we're working on that so that we don't have to add it into our tuitions that our school districts pay in our service fees. We're hopeful that we're gaining some traction on that. So we're looking to amend the maximum balance on our Capital Reserve Account Policy to $2 million. That doesn't mean we're asking for money, doesn't mean we have $2 million. It just, we want to be able to have a place to put it in the event that we are able to do that. We also made some language changes in the first paragraph for clarification purposes regarding where the funding might come from. And we're also adding the word acquire new facilities because we only had repair and maintain. But in the past, a year and a half ago, we bought a small, New Bedford Business Park, and we realized that it would, we should have the word acquire in our Capital Reserve language as well so that we can use those funds when we're doing those kinds of things. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, I would just ask for your approval on these language changes to our Capital Reserve Account Policy.
Any questions?
Just one. Who votes for the expenditure of the funds? Is it the 10 members?
Yes, the 10 school committee members.
Mr. Shea would vote in that.
Excellent. Any other questions?
They also vote to put money into the account. So money coming in or going out all goes through the board.
Okay.
Mr. Committee vote to accept the SMEC Capital Reserve Account Policy as submitted.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Given none? Motion passes.
Thank you, and thank you for taking me out of order.
Have a good night.
Public comment? You have Kelly Martin here today. Speaking on the Legal and Protective Services Program.
Teacher and student and community. I recognize. We. To. So. Allow building of. I would, by which can nutrition grow. Even programs brought into the school and test cases not being applied to schools potential. I wonder. Um. What? This. Can find additional space to accommodate. But many times. Stop. After. I think what I really. Sure. Today I have went to counter. I.
Reading and acceptance of the minutes of the October 14th, 2025 meeting. My request of approval?
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Separate vote must be taken to accept and hold the minutes of the executive session until the matter is completed.
Make that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Votes. Approval of bills. Excuse me. Included in your backup material is a copy of warrant 26-04 and the amount of $1,23,748 for your approval. Quest approval.
Almost.
Second.
Do I hear a second?
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion pass. Accountability Report. Common Admiral will present the Accountability Report.
So, as many of you know. Last December, that no longer counts MCAS as a graduation requirement. It's still part of our accountability measure. It actually makes up 60%. So you've received a copy of this ahead of time. I'll go through this similar to how I did in the past. An overview of the accountability categories and calculations, definitions for achievement, and then school and state comparisons for achievement, and SGP. All right. So we have five buckets that count towards accountability. MCAS achievement.
Growth.
Indicators under high school completion, some additional indicators, and progress towards English language proficiency. The first thing we'll go through. Is the performance levels. Technical support. So all our students are, receive a score on their reports, and we often refer to these under these achievement levels. We have not meeting expectations at the low range, that starts at 440, all the way to exceeding expectations, and a perfect score is a 560. A lot of what we see for accountability makes comparisons of students in the meet and exceeds range and the not meeting range. So what you'll see on this first slide is how we did overall compared to the state in achievement. So on the left, you'll see a comparison of how Greater New Bedford Voc Tech did, the percentage of students in meeting or exceeding compared to the state. And you'll notice that there's a difference of 18 percentage points. So the red numbers are a unfavorable differential, and the green numbers are a favorable differential. I do also want to note that statewide, there was a three percentage point drop in math achievement and a six percentage point drop in ELA achievement. So when we look at our subgroups, we did perform lower than the state, the percentage of students in meeting or exceeding for almost every subgroup, Hispanic and Latino, those students achieved at exceeding and meeting slightly higher than the state. Alternately, we have lots of favorable differentials on the right-hand side. So we had less number of students achieving in the not meeting expectations range for ELA. And what this means is that we had more students in the partially meeting range. You'll see a similar trend for math, where we were 15 percentage points in achievement lower than the state in the meeting or exceeding. And again, considerably less students in the state in almost every category than the not meeting expectations range. And the trend was again the same for science. An additional 20% of our accountability is growth. So that compares how students performed in the eighth grade to how they did in the 10th grade. So that was the value add to being here at Greater New Bedford Voc Tech. You will see something similar for SGP. The orange line is state, blue is school. Though the state remained relatively steady, the SGP at 50, we did drop from 47 to 37 for all students. For students with disabilities and for high needs, you'll see that we were lower than the state by 10 points for high needs and 11 points for students with disabilities. For our Hispanic and Latino population, we were eight points lower than the state and five points lower than the state in ELASGP for English learners and our former English In ELA, our African-American and Black students, again, the SGP was lower than overall in the state, and the same for our white students. Math statewide, SGP has been at 50 since pre-pandemic. Typically, we are above the state. This past year, we did drop overall to a 43. For our high needs and students with disabilities groups, we were at 44 and 40 SGP compared with the state's 48 and 47. For our Hispanic and Latino students, we were nearly identical to the state's SGP of 47. We were at 46. And despite a drop in math, SGP overall for our L and FEL students to 53, we still remain higher than the state, which was at 49. Math SGP for African-American and Black students remains steady at 52, above the state's 50. And for our white students, SGP was at 41 compared to 50 for the state. What I do want to point out, there isn't SGP for science because that's a skills-based test. It's an end-of-course exam. Students don't take biology in elementary school and middle school, so we can't track. We do know that last year, our students finished the MCAS in record time. Typically, we have students who take almost the entire time. We have overflow rooms that essentially didn't happen this past year. And I imagine that had an impact on our scores. Of course, we do also understand that this was a variable statewide. This impacted all schools. So we have to work to build a culture of the test measures what you know, you've been doing a great job, take the test to demonstrate what you know. Because I do believe that this may have removed the barrier of that test anxiety, that the high stakes of the MCAS, which was what a lot of folks were concerned about, especially for particular populations. This was high stakes, they had really high anxiety, and it impacted their performance. So once we level out and we can build a culture of students just demonstrating what they know.
The thing is, one, just to make sure that members are able to digest that, if they have questions related to the MCAS assessments, this would be a good time to talk that through. You know, as you can see, there was a significant drop in scores. I do not think that is not consistent with the fact that there was a change in MCAS policy statewide, which I spoke about pretty aggressively last spring. I want to highlight that for seven or eight years consecutively in math, all students and most demographic groups, almost all demographic groups, exceeded growth scores in every statistical category for math for seven consecutive years. And across the board this year, fell below the state average. The growth measures progress, and Mrs. Ammaral's conversation about kids doing the test in 15 or 20 minutes, anxiety or otherwise, there is no other reasonable conclusion to that other than that. It's only one year. One year doesn't make a data trend. But I want to highlight that for the committee, that there was a significant drop.
I was looking at this, and I was like, what is going on?
And it's not unusual, because I know other districts that had the same. And when, I think, kids found out that MCAS no longer counts, do you put the fidelity in to do the testing at the level that you should? So I think there's a lot of variables this year on the data.
Looking at the demographics of the results. I guess the buckets. If my memory serves me right, doesn't it kind of mirror what your heat map looked like for your Student Opportunity Act? Also, you looked at heat map. All right, so I look at ELA, and I'm looking at, and it was a similar number of what you were targeting with your SOA to improve, weren't you?
Yeah, so, you know, I think the point behind this, and I have to take a closer look at that, Mr. Kitchen, but I think that the point behind this is, for me anyway, the point behind the student growth percentile in particular, right? There had been measurable progress 2017 to 2024. There was a slight dip in ELA in 2022, 23, and 24. Math was consistently above the state threshold, and almost across the board, there was a dip in SGP below state levels, right? That can only be tied to the test scores, right? Because the test scores, the growth percentile measures a kid's performance in a cohort against their eighth-grade performance, right? So what had been happening for seven years is kids were outperforming their cohorts from middle school, which was a sign that the education they were receiving here was improving their test performance regardless of score level against their peers statewide. That did not happen here. Now, whether or not there were kids that completed the test faster in suburban communities or urban communities, I mean, that's all to be flushed out over the next several years when we look at this. But I don't think there's a reasonable conclusion that can be drawn other than the fact that test times were significantly lowered, very few kids, if any, were in overflow rooms. Test was completed in large part within the allotted time, if not within, in some cases, 15 to 30 minutes. The attention to detail just wasn't there as a result to the change in statewide policy.
I don't know if I'm correct enough, but it was high growth and could that impact the level of growth this year? Because you've reached such a high level last year that you can't necessarily match that level of growth again in the cohort.
But it would have been geared towards their eighth-grade cohort, not so much their 10th. It doesn't compare 10th to 10th, compares against their eighth-grade cohort. So if we were all in eighth grade, we had a score, we all got a 480, we become part of that statewide cohort measured in the 10th grade, yeah. I think it does signify that some kids who had that score in other districts may have scored higher than what kids did here. And again, depending on where those districts are, maybe there were different pieces that were put in place. But test scores dropping also would have that effect with SGP.
And we do have common formative assessments, and we have beginning, middle, and end-of-year tests in all four classes. So it will be interesting now that we've adopted. To run that along the way and compare that to next year's achievement and see if learning, the measure of learning matches.
I just want the committee to also be aware, there's a district-wide initiative around grading that is underway, where we're looking at three years' worth of student grades to kind of look around equity in grading and things of those like, but that will also be part of that. The other thing I want to mention is there's a statewide conversation underway around the Governor's Council's recommendations for new accountability measures and new standards, one of which that's being floated is end-of-course assessments. So I just want folks to be aware of that. It's not MCAS, but it is standardized end-of-course assessments designed to measure or not whether students are meeting certain standards proficiency-wise according to the state dialogue. That is not statute yet, it's not regulation yet, but that is being floated in conversations around the state. Again, we won't see that this year, probably not next year, as we have a composite determination in place through '27. But I wouldn't be surprised to see some of that by 2028 or '29, especially if the statewide data around MCAS performance continues to show this in high school.
I think there was some nice numbers for some of our subgroups, though.
Yeah.
Which is really promising.
And that does show up in other places, and you could see that a little bit here. So thank you for that. Another 20% bucket is high school completion, and this includes our four-year cohort graduation rate, our dropout rate, and an extended engagement rate. So what you can see here is that our graduation dipped very slightly. We were at 95.7%, 23. In '24, we were at 93.9%. But the state average is 88.4%. We remain above the state, and we do have a committee that is together and meets regularly on student engagement to both take a look at this graduation rate and the annual dropout rate, which did increase a little bit to 0.6 while the state is at 2%. The catch-all bucket is additional indicators, and this includes chronic absenteeism and advanced coursework completion. And at Greater New Bedford, our chronic absenteeism is down by 0.2%. Our advanced coursework completion is way up. We're at 74 compared to the state's 68.8%. So this includes our 11th and 12th grade students who enroll in what the state has decided is advanced coursework. So these aren't our honors courses, they're courses that the state has coded, like our Algebra III. It is all AP courses. All of our co-op counts as advanced coursework, and the articulation agreements we have with colleges and universities for some of our related coursework. So we continue to do great work in that. The last 10% is our progress towards English language proficiency. So this is measured by student scores on access testing. Once a student is deemed an English learner, they take access testing every year until they reclassify, and every year, the state sets targets for them to meet proficiency within six years. Our 10% of our English learners made adequate progress towards English language proficiency this year. We have taken a look at these numbers, and as you may know, our freshman class, our number of English learners went up last year. We were at just over 90. This year, we're at 144. So we have looked at ways to better serve students. We've added an ESL Strategies course that focuses on explicit social and academic language so that all English learners have a period dedicated to English language development rather than our previous push-in model. We've also added EL Support and CVTE. Two of our paraprofessionals in the ESL department, they are both bilingual, they spend their entire days in CVTE. Right now, they're focusing on our ninth graders going through exploratory because safety is our number-one priority, but we also want to make those students feel seen and welcome so that they know they belong here and want to stay here. Once we have permanent placements, we'll put those ESL folks in different academies so that they can focus on grades nine through 12 in there. So we are taking steps towards this, so I'm very interested to see how this will look So our final percentile calculation takes into account how we do on all five of the buckets. And with 60% of our accountability being MCAS, 40% achievement, 20% growth, you did see those trends, our accountability is at 29 this year. So we are in the 29th percentile in comparison to all other high schools in Massachusetts. I did include links on the last slide, and I can share this with you electronically if you'd like, so you can go directly to this. You can drill down as much as you like and see comparisons on every single indicator for every subgroup, how we are compared to the state. If you're interested in particular schools, all of that data. If you're interested in particular schools, all of that data is public information and I'm happy to share that with you and answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Here we none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Student reps report.
So I'm just going to highlight the important ones. We had our homecoming a couple of weeks ago, I think it was last Saturday. It was very successful, it was a lot of fun. We had a lot more students than past years, which was very, very exciting. A lot more people are starting to get more involved, which is always a great thing. We had our pep rally the Friday before, it was extremely successful, everybody was extremely excited. It went a lot better than I thought. At planning it, I was a little skeptical, but it went a lot better than expected. A few people that really put a lot of work into it besides myself was our senior class president, his name is Jordan Diaz, he was one of the MCs for the pep rally with myself, as well as Mr. Methia, Mr. Rivera, Ms. Gaspar, Ms. Roberts, Ms. Aruda, they are our class advisors, and Ms. Fortin, she runs student councils as well as myself. All of their support and all their ideas really helped us put the event together and we couldn't have done it without them. Also, all the students that participated in relay races and musical chairs, we had our relay race with air mattresses, which was the best, it was, it was the best, it was very, very fun. That was also one of the things I was very skeptical about, but it worked better than expected. And all the teachers that volunteered to get pied in the face with extremely thick whipped cream, I got pied myself and I couldn't breathe. So we appreciate their sportsmanship and everything that they do. Things that are coming up, we have our Powderpuff game is on November 26th at 4:00. It's our second annual one. We have over 40 students per team, so 40 juniors, 40 seniors, well, it's a little more than that, which is almost double of what we had last year. So that's very fun. It is our Greater New Bedford Voc Tech annual bonfire, it's happening right after the game, so everyone that buys a ticket to the Powderpuff game also has their ticket for the bonfire as well. On each team, we have two student coaches and one staff coach and Principal Williams will be our referee. And last month, I briefly talked about that I was attending the Massachusetts Association of Student Representatives Delegate Assembly. I attended that on October 18th and it was a very informative assembly. I was the only representative that came from a vocational school and had to actually explain to multiple people what a vocational school was. But I want to thank Mrs. Fredette as well as Superintendent Watson for putting me in contact with Claire Mullins, she is their chief of staff and I'm actually still in contact with that organization and plan on attending numerous like assemblies coming in the fall and winter. So, thank you.
Thank you. Good job, yeah. Okay, Superintendent, shout out?
Madam Chair, so this month, I just would like to highlight Mrs. Maria Fredette.
Well, well.
Maria is going to be recognized amongst some other area folks as the longest-serving employee in the district. I don't know if I should say, you know, you've been here for a lot, 40 years.
Wow.
Coming up next year, so she's been here for a long time and the, and the local papers are doing a story on the longest-serving employees in all of the districts. So I want to call that out tonight and celebrate Maria's contributions to the school now for almost four decades.
Alright.
And you came as a freshman in your November 2nd.
That's it.
Hey, the Artisan Report.
Well, I'm going to jump in here for Mr. Williams, kind of quickly take you through the Artisan Report for November 2025. It opens with a little presentation from our humanities, in our humanities classes from both our local history with Mr. Sylvia and World History I with Mr. Roderick. Sylvia partnered with our librarian, Slavinsky, in order to create a digital archive of GNBVT yearbooks that students can access. And that project is noted in the first part of your Artisan Report. In the history component, Mr. Roderick talked about a Hinduism project and he showed some examples of his students presenting research on some of their work related to that project in the first pages. There's an update on the third page from Mr. DeGrace in Cooperative Education. Co-op is off to a strong start this year, there are more than 160 students that are working across community partners collectively at this point, they've earned close to 170,000. As you know, in previous years, we've seen as many as 330 or 340 students, once we get students, once we get juniors and seniors both out, we're expecting those numbers again this year, we update later in the year as well. And he highlights some of the facilities that students are working at Sunshine Place and Autumn Glen, as well as a few others in your Artisan Report. Our vocational spotlight this week is in Academy C, the Transportation and Technology Academy, you see it begin with automotive, discussing the freshman exploratory as well as the sophomore and junior and senior classes. In, in collision, you see the same type of report around the safety protocols update that's been underway there, as well as the work that is happening in each of the four classes. Mr. Shepherd also goes on to highlight the work in the cosmetology program with images and pictures that support the students' work in that endeavor. Diesel Services and Information Technology, as well as updates from machine technology, marine technology, stationary engineering and metal fabrication. And the Artisan Report for November concludes with Ms. Dennis's work in the Office of EDI Compliance. There are any specific questions related to this report, I'll do my best to answer them.
Questions? Here we none? Parent communications, Superintendent Watson will bring members up to date on the possum checks. Graphs show the number of parents participating bi-weekly in the possum communications with school.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, you have the last two possum reports for each grade level. Draw your attention to summaries down the bottom, if you haven't read them, some of the comments that parents are making, I think are important. Things like appreciation and praise for the effective cell phone policies, guidance counselor appreciation, great communication with families, these are all initiatives that we're seeing some positive feedback from and that we're working on, the introduction of parent square is mentioned several times throughout the possum reports as well. So some really good work that's happening sometimes behind the scenes and isn't noticed. It's, I appreciate the parents calling, taking a few extra seconds to make sure that that note is included as well in the possum surveys.
Superintendent's weekly updates, included in your backup material is a copy. Superintendent's weekly updates to the staff.
The last item here under the reports are the Monday newsletters that are sent out every Monday morning and I just always include those in your packet so you can see how we're communicating with the teams.
Okay. Next, we have a vote to appoint a school nurse. Included in your backup material is a copy of the appointment recommendation letter and resume for Jala Dua. Mrs. Dua will present the meeting to answer any questions that members may have.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna help her, I just want her to come there. I didn't say you, never leave you out there. So, you know, I'm happy in your packet, I included a memorandum with my, my appointment, which is obviously subject to any confirmation from the committee as we've discussed. We're excited to have Jala back on the team. She's a fantastic nurse, well-respected by her colleagues and students, and so it's with great pleasure that I present Jala Dua back to the committee with my recommendation for hire.
I just want to say I worked with Jala for a lot of years and I'm thrilled that she is here.
I just wanted to say. Knew her when she was born. Any questions, anything?
Motion, a motion to.
We have one question. No, I'm kidding.
I'll make the motion to uphold Mr. Superintendent Watson's recommendation to hire.
We have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Here and none? Motion approved.
Okay, we're going to actually pull item 8C off the agenda until December. That meeting, I believe, is November 19th. It's been rescheduled.
Ryan Mathier is requesting approval for the girls volleyball team to travel to Orlando, Florida, the KSA tournament.
Mr. Mathier is not here, so we would just request the committee's approval for out-of-state travel.
Do I hear? I have a second? All those in favor? Opposed? Here and none? Recommendation passes. Vote to designate equipment as surplus, included in your backup material is a list of surplus equipment.
Make the motion.
I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Recommendation passes. Report on personal appointments, retirements or resignations to be received and placed on file.
Make the motion that we take A and B, receive and place on file.
I have a second? In favor? Opposed? Here and none? Communications, Treasurer's Report. Mass, Mass Joint Conference, November 12th to the 14th, 2025. Open House, Sunday, November 23rd, 2025, from 11 to 3 p.m. Craft Fair, November 29th and 30th, 2025, 9:30 to 4 p.m. at the Field House. Holiday Dinner, December 9th, 2025, 4:30 at the Coffee Shop. Ask Q Conference Feedback. What's Texas Conference Feedback and Donation from Brogea Machine Company, September 10th, 2025.
Oh, can I just ask a question? Yolanda, we all set for the craft fair with bathrooms and accessibility and all that?
Okay. Do you have any community, committee discussion, sorry? Here and none? Any other business that may properly come before it? Here and none? Meeting adjourned?
Motion.
No, you know.